Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Rick LaBelle to be the temporary chairperson for this evening's meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's all stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Rick LaBelle is here. Ms. Vosberg?
Here.
Carl Leonard is excused this evening. Mark Renaud?
Here.
Jim Klenowski? Ralph Jaworski?
Here.
Brian Carr?
Here.
Rich Burkhart?
Here.
And Eric Hyderer?
Here.
Item number four is I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting of January 7th, 2025.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Item five is I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. I'm sorry, who? Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Item six is public comments, and I'd like to remind everybody to keep it at three minutes. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make on agenda or non-agenda items?
I did it. My first comments are with reference to the agenda item, with reference to G and T recycling. I wrote a couple of letters to the township as to the site plan, and there's a mutual access easement between my client's property just to the north in this parcel. And it seems to me, based on the last site plan submission from AEW, that they have the fence just past the hydrant, fire hydrant, going back to where the property line is, which would encumber that easement between the two parcels. So we would ask that you take another look at that and not approve the site plan that has that fence encroaching on that easement. And then, the other comment is with reference to the agenda item for the rezoning ordinance as to gas station facilities. I just wanted to point out that in the Giffles and Webster comment on page seven, they indicated, and I had put in there our proposed language change, that the site location requirement shall not be applicable if the facility is located within one mile of the I-94 interstate right-of-way. And that's the criteria from MDOT. And Giffles and Webster reflected in their memorandum that I suggested that all location criteria be eliminated. We're just saying that one criteria is it's supposed to be at the intersection of two public roads. In this case, my client's property is on 23 Mile Road, which is an MDOT road. So they would issue the permits with reference to driveway access. And so, we're asking that the planning commission set a public hearing with reference to our requested amendment, because we first submitted some stuff last summer. So it's now like eight months and still no actions taken. And I did file a ZBA application, which was turned back to me by Mr. Palin, indicating that supposedly the ZBA didn't have jurisdiction over that request. Thank you. And if you allow comments on that rezoning issue, we would like to participate in that. Thank you.
I'm following in Attorney Gendron Alex's comments. My name is Andy Goldberg. I'm an attorney for the proposed purchaser of the parcel that's under consideration, or that's been discussed about, a proposed text amendment. I represent the proposed buyer, Royal Gas and Oil. There are just a couple of points that I want to reiterate that I think have been stated in the past, but just again for reiteration. One is the community benefit monetar- first and foremost monetarily and by employment that has been provided and is in your packet as set forth by Macomb County Development Office. And they've done their studies in terms of the additional revenue, wages, and employment that would be, that would benefit the Chesterfield community. I also want to talk about this idea of, it's not, this is not a truck stop or a gas station. This is an energy hub. What we're trying to provide Chesterfield is the availability of all types of vehicular transportation, any type of means of tran- of energy. It could be hydrogen, it could be natural gas, it could be diesel, it could be gasoline. This is, there's not necessarily one type that would be at the location. The reason for this size location is because we want to make all of these available to the community as technology changes, as the market changes, as regulation changes. Our opinion is that the existing regulation, which requires gas stations to be on two corners, really, those lot sizes are not even large enough to provide that value and those alternative energy sources to Chesterfield communities. And really, traffic that goes along I-94 that would come off. So, these, these other types of energy really couldn't even become available in the, in Chesterfield Township based on the two-corner, the corner lot requirement that is set forth now. As well, because of our development, we feel that we can provide all of this energy in a cost-efficient manner to the entire community. So, those would be the, those are really kind of the three points that I wanted to reiterate about the economic value, employment value, the community value for energy that's going to be here. And finally, we know that the state of Michigan is really imploring an I-94 corridor, or an alternative energy hub along I-94. And we want to see Chesterfield Township take advantage of that. That's all I have. And to echo Mr. Gendron Alex, if comments are available when we get down to the proposed discussion on the text amendment, we can chat further about that. Thank you very much.
Can I have you sign in, please?
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak this evening?
Good evening. Janice Young. I left my, typed up notes at home, so I have to go with my, my draft notes that I emailed. But first thing, on that G and T scrap yard, I've mentioned before that that's right across from where I work. Again, I just want to point out that I noticed in the plans tonight that there's still no other building other than a steel container office listed on the plan, so I know that that's not our requirement. So I just hope that that's still going to be talked about or under consideration, about not allowing it. And also about the traffic. Not just any traffic, but you know, they're, from what I remember, they talked about having large trucks with roll-offs. There's going to be trucks with trailers. You know, I've seen enough scrapper trucks. In fact, I just had a dishwasher picked up from my curb tonight. And you know, those trucks tend to be older vehicles, if you know what I mean, not in the best of shape. Usually, large amounts of scrap strapped down to them, strapped to their trailer. So I am worried about that type of traffic right across from my office. And there is a medical facility behind our building. You know, these trucks can be dropping their scrap in the roadway out there. I don't know how much that happens now. But their current building leaves their gate open, at least during business hours. And when you look back in their yard, it looks like a junkyard. So that would be the view directly across from the shopping plaza, from my office and the residential street on Pine Gate, right across the street there. So I just want to point those out. As far as the fueling station goes, I had some notes on that, but you know, this whole NEVI program, with, with Trump in the White House now, and he's kind of pulling back, or trying to pull back some of the funds, whether he can do that or not, I don't know. But you have to really think about where we're going in the country now that EV mandates are not really looming over us as much. You know, and it's been given to the State Department of Transportation to, to handle the money that comes from these programs. And you know, they're in charge of roads and highways, and they're not, they're not experts in these charging stations. You know, they take their cybersecurity software stuff, ongoing maintenance demands. And a lot of these facilities, they only have a five-year requirement to maintain these chargers through the NEVI program, through that, for those, whatever that program is. So I don't know what kind of fueling station they're talking about, if they're talking about other things. But it's a slippery slope if we start changing our zoning ordinance, you know, for this alternative fueling source. And I understand there is probably a need for this stuff. But I think we really need to be careful and think about the future of our township and what that would, what that would really look like for us down the road. Another, another note on these chargers, from what I've read, they're more expensive for people to use these public chargers versus at home. And there are no shortages of chargers, charging stations in the area. This is on PlugShare.com. These are just public and high-power chargers. They're not through the NEVI program. There's only been a couple hundred of those actually put in place across the country since, as of last November. There's more coming, I understand that. But we have plenty of charging stations, so don't let that be something that garners you to, to change our language. Because there are, you know, options out there for, for people on that. So... I'm probably out of time, aren't I? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Young, did you sign in? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? If not, item seven is public hearings.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry. I'd like to just say one thing. Megan Schoniger, 28057 Hanger Road. I guess the only thing I'm noticing as you bring this whole G and T development, let's not mix that up with GT Scrap Recycling. Two different things, which I'm not sure all of us knew. That Crandall Drain run right through the north end of G and T. And then this new Phase 2, I would presume, as I've seen everything going down, butts up right to the Meldrum Drain. I know things that we've been talking about with this whole IAA, whatever, Bates Road Development deals with the Crane, the Crandall Drain. All of us have been seeing that the railroad tracks east to Grashit has been completely cleared. Mr. Gendron Alex is ironically the lawyer for all these same people. I guess, to me, that just raises complete red flag. And now, you know, Phase 2, G and T, they're going to have Phase 3 up to 25-mile? I don't know. Just a couple of questions, I guess, I have in my head. We haven't been too clear in the township as who owns what land. I will finish signing in. That's about it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? With that, we'll move on to item seven, public hearings. We have none tonight. Item eight is our regular agenda. Our Secretary Rick will be reading the agenda items this evening. Item A is G and T Scrap Recycling Site Plan 2024-14. It's a special land use, M2. It's 6.6, 6.0099, 6.099 acres, west side of Grashit Avenue, south of 22 Mile Road. The parcel ID is 15-09-30-126-009 The address is 48655 and 48677 Grashit Avenue. The public hearing was closed and we postponed making a decision back on 12/3/24. We sent the applicant back to the drawing board with, with some tasks. And the applicant is here this evening, if he could review the, the tasks and where he stands with them.
Good evening. My name is Nick Benacristo, co-founder and president of GT Scrap Recycling. Not to be confused with G and T down the road. First and foremost, is it all right if I address some of the public comment that was just brought up? Or would you prefer me go through the list of the previous concerns?
I mean, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, you know, just for clarity, sure.
Yeah, just for clarity, we don't have to get into great detail. I guess I'll start with, we have no control over customer vehicles, only our own, which all our vehicles are DOT compliant. They're inspected annually per DOT standards. We can't speak towards customers dropping material in their load. All I can say is, it is necessary for recycling. Obviously, if we're putting things at the curb, people are relying on that as their livelihood. So, you know, we trust that they're strapping everything down and doing everything properly to protect their livelihood, not just themselves and the cars around them. Additionally, related to traffic, Macomb County Road Commission, along with the Department of Public Safety, have approved what we have here in the traffic patterns that we're proposing in regards to that. In regards to the hydrant issue and the easement and the fence jogging back in as you move westward, the easement ends at the hydrant, or I should say 12 feet behind, or in any direction of that hydrant. It does not extend the entire property line. That is why the fence jogs back. So we're simply just trying to utilize the property that we paid taxes on. I think that addresses those issues. In regards to the previous meeting and some of the concerns that were raised in this planning commission, we could start by going through the review letter and commentary that Jonathan provided earlier. In regards to lighting and photometrics, we have submitted a photometric plan that was executed. And we've determined that the poles that were inherited on the DTE OPL lighting agreement are not necessary for our ongoing operations, as our hours are between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM. We've contracted DTE to remove those poles at our expense, obviously. Past that, we do have floodlighting on the building that is going to be removed in our construction process. Will be replaced with shielded directional lighting that will only light up the doorways immediately below them, similar to our office building, which is compliant and within the ordinance limits for directional lighting, shielded directional lighting. I know an issue of material pile heights came up in the last meeting. We've determined the piles to range between 20 and 35 feet. We would absolutely commit to maintaining or not exceeding 40-foot pile heights to be within ordinance standards for M2 Industrial. Moving on to the building materials and screening, we've proposed five additional arborvitae trees to, to act as a screening barrier for the container office that we're proposing. We are not, I, I should say, although we prefer the centralized structure in, in any property to help streamline operations, act as a meeting point for inbound and outbound traffic, offer direction to any, any customers or visitors in a location outside of the office. It also serves as a congregation area for our emergency response plans. However, we are receptive to automating the shipping and receiving process through closed-circuit video monitoring and intercom systems. So if, if it is a sticking point and the commission sees it as being outside of ordinance and it would not fit, we would be receptive to committing to that and automating that functionality with technology now. In regards to the noise and vibration, we did have an impact study completed. And it has found that the vibration tolerance limits are well below the ordinance standards, also below the human threshold for perceiving vibration in the ground. Additionally, we are within ordinance limits for noise as tested from the site line. And I, I believe that, that covers the concerns that were brought up in the last meeting. And if there's anything else, please.
Well, I'm going to start. I'm going to start with the first one, was, was lighting, because that is my expertise. Referencing your, your photometric plan on page drawing number QCV2, you're still showing lighting in the parking lot area, or in, I'm sorry, in the, in the work area, and you're showing floodlighting. What is your intention there? Because we do not allow floodlighting.
Oh, we're going to remove that floodlighting in the, outside of the building, in the warehouse.
No, this is out in the actual scrap yard.
Oh, 2ZV2. Those, all those poles are being removed in that plan. So every, I believe it's six poles in totality. They will be removed within the next two weeks, as we've already committed to that with DT.
So what are you going to do for lighting?
Right now, we're going to have the directional lighting with the RSXF4 fixtures that have shielded directional lighting. We're going to run that off the building. And then, we're going to have two poles, which are denoted on the site plan on either side of the scale. So that will show where the entrance is there. And that will be the same lighting that is shielded and directional, only for the immediate area below, eliminating light pollution.
Okay. I'm going to request that, you know, that you do put something in writing and it's, it can be dealt with administratively to, to reflect those changes, because the drawings that we have still show the six poles with the floodlights on them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Vosberg, any questions? Mr. Klenowski? Mr. Carr?
No.
Mr. Renaud?
You covered my issue.
Now, I just want to point out, I thought it said 40 feet was maximum height. I think you referenced 45, so just make sure it's within whatever the regulation is as far as height of the mound.
To be clear, 40 feet would be what we would commit to.
Just one comment. I really appreciate the engineering noise study that you did. It was comprehensive. You went to a really good firm to get it done, and it answered all my questions in spades, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
No questions, just...
It was hard to, to find that firm, actually, so I'm happy we landed with the right one.
With that, I would entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve GT Scrap Cycling Recycling Site Plan 2024-14 with the, the changes had, have been made. The, we're going to require, as part of my motion, require that administratively, there is a... Let me, let me backstep a second. There was a, there was a comment made about, and I think that we all need to talk about this, the, the removal of the, the Conex box and going with a remote with speakers and what have you. Anybody have any comments on that? To do away with the Conex box and not have to deal with the building materials of the enclosure. Ms., Ms. Vosberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It sounds like, just listening to it, it sounds like a reasonable way to solve that issue. But I would have a concern about that. I didn't think to ask about that, the noise. Would that be an additional noise that could possibly be above the noise? I don't know what voice is over the loudspeakers, what, what level they, they reach. I don't, I don't know that. So that could be clarified. But other than that, I think it's a reasonable substitute.
Mr. Klenowski, any comments? Mr. Carr?
I mean, to me, that's a business decision. I was the one who commented last time on the Conex, that I don't, it doesn't meet our ordinance. So, I mean, for my recommendation, they should be putting in a permanent structure. Because those Conex boxes are temporary in nature. That's the entire purpose of them, is temporary. And so, from my perspective, it, it should be permanent building or removed. So if they choose to automate it and remove it, that'd be up to them. But the Conex shouldn't be authorized, I don't think.
Mr. Renaud, anything?
Just tackle what Mr. Carr said. Yeah, if they're going to remove it and replace it with a technological replacement, then I think that's a good alternative, and I'd be for that.
Same.
I'm going to, I'm going to dive in a little bit on the acoustic side of this. The, the report showed the traffic alone on, on Grashit Avenue can hit as high as 76 dB, which is 60 dB higher than our ordinance allows. The measurements taken were the nearest residents. Because our concern was, are the people living in the area going to be overwhelmed by noise? The average, the average dB was 10 dB lower than, than the ordinance, and 16 dB lower than the traffic alone. I don't have any concerns, and I do have a background in acoustics. So, I, I understand your question, but it's not additive when you're looking at decimals. So, I think, I think that part of it would be, would be fine.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
And the applicant is in agree, in agreement with removing the Conex box or the, the scale house and coming, coming up with an automated system?
Yes, we could absolutely commit to that, and we could do that in the administrative approval.
Back to my motion then. Back to my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve GT Scrap Recycling Site Plan 2024-14 with a few additional things that need to happen.
Mr. Chair, can I just interrupt? I don't, I don't want to be rude and interrupt, but there's two issues that you have to decide. One is special land use and one is site plan, right?
That is correct.
Okay. It, it seems backwards to be approving the site plan before you voted on the special land use, right?
That's true.
Because you don't get the site plan if the use is dis, is not approved by the planning commission.
That's fair.
So it would be my recommendation that you take two bites at this. The first would be a motion to either approve or not approve the special land use with reference to the specific standard set forth in 6.2B of your ordinance. There's a recent court of appeals case, which I sent to you, which says that you have to go through each of those standards. And under our ordinance, the applicant is required to meet each of the standards. So if the motion is to approve, you're going to have to indicate that they go to standard A, B, C, go right down the line, and, and, and make a finding one way or the other whether they meet those. If they do, they're entitled to the use, and if they don't, they're not entitled to the use. If you, if the planning commission votes to approve the special land use, now you know the use is approved. Now you can go on to the second motion to approve the site plan and lay out each of the conditions that you just discussed, so your record is crystal clear.
Okay. I'm going to have to get those eight standards then, unless I can reference them as just all eight.
Pardon me?
Can I reference as all eight, or do I need to have?
No, you have to go through one at a time.
One at a time. One at a time. So I'm gonna need to get the eight standards.
In section six point two B. Jonathan, are you pulling those up? Thank you, buddy.
Okay. This is gonna be a lengthy, uh, motion.
Mr. Chair.
Is to approve the.
Mr. Chair, just what, what is the, uh, number that you're looking at on the, on the ordinance?
Six point two.
Six point two.
Thank you.
My motion is to approve the, uh, special land use, um, with, with regard to the, uh, the eight standards. Standard one is the proposed use of such a location, such location size and character will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and acceptable regulations of the zoning district in which they are located, which in this instance, it is. The, um, the area is zoned, uh, manufacturing and there's other manufacturing around. Two, the proposed use shall be of nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved. It is on a, um, it's on an M road and, um, it's, uh, it's currently two lots away and it hasn't caused an issue yet. Number three, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operations of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emitting therefrom, which might be noxious or to the occupants or any other nearby uses, nearby uses permitted. It is currently being used. It is in a, uh, an industrial environment and, um, it will not. The proposed use, number, bottom number four, the proposed use shall be such that the proposed location and height of the buildings and structures on the location, nature of the height and walls. Um, as discussed, the, uh, the, um, mounds of material will be held under the forty feet. So it does not impede or go against that, that rule. Number five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the distant, adjacent land uses as regards prevailing shopping habits, convenience and of access by prospective patrons. It is in an industrial area and, uh, it will not impede or change the, uh, the harmony of the, of the local businesses. Number six, the proposed use is necessary for public convenience at the proposed location. It does make sense to have this on, that on Grashit as a, um, as an industrial facility as well as, um, egress and ingress into the property. Number seven, the proposed use is so designated, located, planned and to be operated that the public health, safety and welfare will be protected. The applicant has provided sound, vibration, noise, and he's proven that, um, that the current facility does not, um, give off any kind of noxious, uh, chemicals. There will be nothing spilled on the ground. So it does, it does, this does apply there. Number eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity in which it is located. It will not. The, um, as stated before, he's currently operating two doors down and it hasn't impacted the, uh, the local, um, businesses or anything. So that is in compliance. Number nine is applications within flood, flood plain or floodway. It doesn't, um, has nothing to do with, um, we, we don't have any issues there. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Also, as contingent as part of my motion, they will be providing a revised lighting plan, removing the poles and, um, and, um, a revised drawing for our, for our files. And secondly, um, the. You're right. I'm sorry. Special land use, I'm sorry. You're right. Um, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
Have a roll call, please. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that's passed. Here we go again. I'm sorry? The site plan? I'll have to do this again for the site plan, Mr. Seaver? I can reference it, be done. Okay. Um, the second motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan as provided contingent upon the removal of the light poles that, uh, are not in compliance as well as, um, the applicant is removing. And, um, the, uh, the removal of the building and remotely operating his business without the use of that building. With that, I'll make a motion to approve. Support, I've got a support and, um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for the time and consideration.
Item B is GT Development Site Plan twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, sixteen. Uh, the applicant has, uh, asked to be postponed this evening. So I'm gonna postpone, I'll make a motion to postpone G and T Development Site Plan twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. I'm sorry? Yeah, we can give them a time limit, up to six meetings. It's, did the applicant give any indication as all as to how long he needed?
He did not.
Okay. We'll give them up, up to six meetings. That'll make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Denied? Item C is, uh, Morelli Lot Five Site Plan twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four. It's M one, two point one nine acres, southeast corner of Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive. The parcel ID is one five dash zero nine dash one seven dash three zero one dash zero zero five. The address is two seven zero five six Morelli Drive. Uh, Ms. Osborne, if you can go through, um, Giffords Webster's write-up, please?
Thank you. Um, so in your packets is a letter dated January twenty-seventh, uh, that we've provided a review for you. Um, as Mr. Lobel said, the project is, uh, a ten thousand eight hundred square foot building that's proposed to be used for storing classic cars. Unlike the last site plan that we just looked at, this is, um, not a special land use. So the planning commission's just tasked with the site plan review, making sure that the, the proposal meets all the zoning ordinance standards and their intent. Um, moving on to the bottom of page two or towards the bottom of page two. Um, again, the, the site is located at the southeast corner of Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive and it's currently vacant. Um, there are, there is, um, single family homes, uh, across Chesterfield Road and south and it, south of and adjacent to the site is Land Zone C three general commercial that is vacant. And the rest of the parts, parcels surrounding this one, um, are designated as M one. Um, so out of the ten thousand eight hundred square foot building, a thousand feet of that is going to be office. Other will be, um, shop space or car storage space. And then there's access to the site, um, only off of Morelli Drive. At the, um, top of page three, we get into the standards for the M one district. I'll note that, um, our review letter has a correction to be made. Um, that front yard parking setback, we did deem that that was, um, it isn't compliant. Um, since that additional twenty-five feet comes if it's adjacent or across from residential. Um, so that actually has been met. So the only thing, um, really to note here in the district, uh, standard section is, um, just having the applicant confirm the correct lot area since there were some discrepancies in the, um, proposed plans. At the bottom of, um, page three, we get into the M one, uh, district standards. And you can see, um, a lot of these are just later in the letter or are compliant. Um, all of them actually are either just later or compliant. So then we can move into the site standards on page four. Um, here, uh, we can talk about the building standards. The building's proposed to be mostly stained masonry black with some brick veneer and windows in the office area. Um, they have proposed two square columns that will be painted and the east elevations do show some painted black. Um, but the facades facing Morelli Drive and Chesterfield Road are complementary, compatible in style and of uniform finish with a return on the south elevation. Um, so, uh, the township does not allow, um, building materials to be painted. So the applicant will need to update those. Um, but it is up to the planning commission to determine if the street side exterior finish was returned on the building a sufficient, a sufficient distance. Um, so it has that continued appearance from the street. Um, I'll also note that the sidewalks on the site, um, we're considering those in existing condition. They currently have sidewalks, um, that are five feet wide along Chesterfield Road and they're proposing a five foot wide, uh, sidewalk along Morelli Drive. In terms of screening requirements, the township requires a five foot high landscape berm, um, since it, on Chesterfield Road, since that's across from a residential area. Um, the applicant has proposed a twenty foot wide berm with a height of three feet. And I understand there's some limitations with the site. So, um, that's something that the planning commission may wish to discuss with the applicant about what can be done with that. Uh, overall landscaping, um, is, meets the standards. We just need to, uh, note that irrigation will be provided. Um, and, uh, the dimensions of the, the, uh, landscape parking lot islands, uh, to make sure those are in compliance. The frontage landscaping is compliant, um, with twenty proposed trees among, um, or between Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive. In terms of lighting, um, this is the bottom of page four, top of page five. They have provided a photometric plan and, um, the fixtures will be mounted on the wall at sixteen feet from grade or on poles in the parking areas that are eighteen feet tall, um, with a total, with a base of two feet for a total of twenty feet above grade. Um, this makes the parking lot lighting at a higher height than the building, um, which is not permitted unless the planning commission wishes to modify the standards, uh, saying that the, the lighting can go above the height of the building. Um, and then administrative note that we just need to know that the poles will be setback at least two and a half feet from the curb to allow for vehicle overhang. Um, they're compliant in their parking. They've provided twenty-eight spaces which are required. Um, we did note that some of the spaces, such as the barrier free spaces and the spaces further south on the site might be challenging to move in and out of, um, but all parking has been provided. The applicant's provided two, uh, bicycle parking spaces. Um, the bike rack meets all the specifications of the township except for the, the shape of the park, the bicycle parking. Um, it's not in the required inverted U. So planning commission, um, you can determine if the, the, um, proposed design is acceptable. Uh, there is no off-street loading proposed for the site. Um, however, there is a, uh, no parking zone on the west side of the building near the dumpster that could be used as a loading, unloading zone. Um, so you may wish to talk with the applicant if a loading zone is needed. Um, and then at the bottom of page five, we mentioned site circulation again. Um, they have a five foot wide concrete path that's proposed around, along the front of the building and that widens to a seven foot path further down the building. And then just a note about the trash receptacles. They are providing a trash, um, dumpster. It's located, um, where it'll be visible from Chesterfield Road. Um, it's located on a concrete pad and made of, um, uh, masonry. So I think that, um, covers everything. If you have questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Um, the applicant is here this evening. If, uh, Mr. Morelli could, uh, elaborate?
Yes, David Morelli. To, um, answer a couple of the questions that were addressed, were brought up, um, there was an error. The, the light poles will be removed, the three light poles that show there. Just be lights on the building and we can, uh, orient them with the shield so, so they shine down and don't, you know, shine across the street to the residential. That was one concern. Another one, there is a note on the plan showing the island at seventeen by twelve feet. It's like two hundred and four square feet to address that fifty square foot minimum. And, um, irrigation will be provided in the landscaped areas. What else is there? The one, uh, other thing I can note is that we are providing three, uh, spruce trees around the dumpster enclosure area to shield that. And, um, any other questions or concerns?
Go with the board members now. Eric, you wanna start with this evening?
Uh, you say you don't need a, a loading zone? Cause this is just for car stor-
Private classic car storage.
Private classic cars, okay. Almost there.
Thank you. Rich?
I'm good. Thank you.
Did I hear you pointed out something about the parking lot being higher than the building? No? Well, I, I'm sorry. Okay, good. Thanks for clarification.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah, I just did, uh, one item. Um, I know you, you just stated you were gonna put a couple, uh, trees around where your proposed, uh, location is for the dumpster. Just curious why it couldn't actually go behind the building where it's vacant right now instead of being off of Chesterfield Road?
It's just that if, if, when I expand that parking lot in the future, you'd have to move the whole dumpster area. Where it's at now, you know, it could stay. And also it is kind of on two main roads, being Chesterfield Road and Morelli Drive. It's on the road either way. Um, even if you put it on the north side here on Morelli Drive, you'd still see it from Chesterfield, Chesterfield Road as well, so.
Okay, that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Uh, yeah, a few things. Uh, uh, obviously I concur with, you know, most of the Gifford Webster's comments. I don't need to go over those. But my first one was that dumpster location. Uh, to further clarify, I think that that needs to be moved. It can go to the east side of the building. I mean, it can be outside of, uh, you know, the front of the building, which is Chesterfield. So I don't think that that's in a, a proper location, especially with residential across the street. Um, so I think that does need to be looked at. The turning radiuses, when I look at your turning radius study, I mean, you know, again, I'm just, all I can do is look at the documents you gave me. I mean, they are quite tight. Uh, and actually, when you look at the turning radius, when you zoom in, you, you know, the, the tires are actually going on the curb to be able to make those radiuses. And at least that's what it looks like, you know, when you zoom into the graphics. So I was just curious to, you know, why, why so tight? You know, like, like on the north area, you know, like that one corner one where it shows the, you know, the handicap parking space and the guy, and, uh, that, that driver's gotta kind of back out to the right, you know, and, and then kind of pull forward. But he's actually kind of encroaching in on the parking spaces of the parking when he pulls out. It just, I'm just trying to figure out why so tight. Um, cause to me, it just seems like an issue. I mean, even the guy that's in the, uh, southwest corner, he's gotta back into where the, you know, the concrete apron is of the, and try to miss the, uh, dumpster location. Just, I didn't quite understand that. I mean, again, I mean, I know engineering will eventually look at that, but we are looking at your site plan approval. And, um, it seems like the turning radiuses, I don't know, to me, they can be, uh, they should be reviewed and adjusted to make sure that it's actually provides ample space. Um, cause from a site plan perspective, I, I don't know if I'm sold on that part yet. Um, I do wanna reinforce again, the CMU. I noticed one says it's painted, the other one says it's, it's, uh, stained. Um, then again, I just, I don't like, I wanna make sure we're very clear and we don't, you know, um, there's no mincing of words, right? Like no painting or, or any after products can be put on. You know, we obviously want everything to be factory finished. So whether it's a colored CMU, um, you know, I, I think I, I, I don't wanna speak for everyone on the board, but I, I, you know, I know we have been open to that. But I definitely, we need confirmation that there won't be anything, uh, that's, uh, post-applied to just regular, uh, CMU. And I think other than that. And I think other than that, you know, I think you, I mean, Chesterfield, obviously, I would love to see more screening on the residential side, but I think they met the minimum requirement with the berm and the number of trees.
The berm is slightly less than what's required, it's required to be a five-foot height, it's three foot.
Yeah. That was, that was my only other comment, was just the, was just that, along Chesterfield Road, and again, just because of the proximity to where the, the homes are directly across the street, I think we always owe it to our residences, you know, our residents in the community, which we all are, to do everything we can to make sure that, you know, commercial buildings are properly screened at the minimum requirement, so I would say that's something else that has to be looked at before, you know, from my perspective, it can be approved. That's it. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Kornowski?
Yeah, my, my concern was too with the painted materials, I'd like to see some type of factory material on that rather than paintings.
On the elevation page, it does, the note says standard stained masonry block typical. It's right on the elevation, there's a note that says that.
Stained masonry?
I know it does say the column's painted, so I'm sure if we could change that, make those stained also.
Okay.
But the block is all stained masonry.
I don't know, I'm looking at your elevation, your east elevation, it specifically says painted block.
I believe you have the first review. The second review, I revised everything, we submitted back in, it says stained on it.
I could only speak to the, what we have, I mean, that's what we see.
I resubmitted the whole package after the first review, and we changed that.
No, that's good then.
Yeah.
So again.
Good for me, too.
Then you're ahead of it.
Thank you.
Trustee Vosberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For clarification, because we do, we don't have the same thing that you just described. So is there another drawing that we have in, in the office?
Dave, do you have on yours, the east elevation? Because I, shown on the most recent plans that I have too, that it's showing painted on the east elevation. I mean, that's something that, if you're stating that it's not going to be painted, we can, you can just get us revised drawings, it's not.
I know this was resubmitted altogether, so I don't know why we don't have that, but...
Jonathan, I have, I have one that says stained on my plan.
Well, he has a stained and he has a painted, he has them both. One says stained, one elevation says stained and another one says painted, so they contradict.
Yeah, the revision date I have is 1/13, and then the east elevation shows painted block.
1/13, east elevation on mine says stained masonry block, and the south elevation also says stained masonry block. The only thing that says painted are the two front columns.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there is a note on...
Yeah, look at the left-hand side of the east elevation.
Oh, left-hand, it does say painted block.
Yeah, I think it was just...
On the right hand, it says, it says stained.
Yeah.
I told Derek, yeah, okay, that's a mistake.
Yeah, that can just be removed, it's not that.
Yep.
All right, and the other one is the, the height of the berm? Was that addressed on the newer?
Speak to that, is there, that's, those are platted lots there, there's a 20-foot-wide easement for landscape easement, and to conform with that, with a one-on-three slope, we can go nine feet to go up three foot high, two foot flat to plant the trees, and then nine feet more to get down in that 20-foot easement area.
Mr. Vosberg, if I may. Jonathan, would you mind elaborating on that, please?
Yeah, what Mr. Morelli stated is accurate, this industrial sub was platted prior to the residential being across the street, so when the 20-foot easement was platted, it wasn't accounting for a five-foot berm. So as it stands now, that's been rezoned to residential, there's an existing landscape easement, and as he stated, you know, we do have a berm standard, so, you know, it's this, the slope isn't too steep to get a mower up there and maintain it, and then it's required to have a two-foot flat top, so, you know, 20 feet, you're kind of limited to how high you can go with that, and it matches what's existing on the other side as well.
So, given the timing of everything, it is in compliance then? The timing being when the subdivision?
When it was platted, yeah, and the planning commission does have, you know, some, some authority to modify screening requirements, so.
Thank you, that's honest, your chair.
I have another question then, so in the front, what is the distance between the edge of sidewalk and the back of curb? What is that distance?
On Chesterfield?
No, 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 from the concrete walkway to the back of curb of the new proposed parking lot. What is that? Looks like wire and 20 feet. What am I, what am I missing?
You're right, it would be wider than 20 feet, because there's a 20-foot private easement, and then there's additional space.
So the private easement is between the back of curb and the start of his, and the start?
Between the sidewalk and moves inward towards the site.
Yes, 20 feet, which is currently where he's showing the berm.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Yeah, and then he shows like another 20 feet of just flat grass.
Mm-hmm.
That berm can't take up into the, can't encroach into the, like, what's that flat grass space? I mean, the berm can't be raised and encroach onto that, I don't, I mean, I'm just, I'm missing something. What's, what's restricting, that looks like, like 40 feet to me. It's, right now, it's all grass, so I, am I, I mean, I'm just saying, like, is there something I'm not seeing on the plan that allows the berm not to?
I would defer to Mr. Morelli to address that, but typically, when you have the landscape easements, that's an association's maintaining that, so blurring that line between association, maintenance, landscape easement, and, but that's, that's for the planning commission to determine what's, what's acceptable.
Well, is that what it is, is there a maintenance agreement that's, that?
Trying to fit the berm in the landscape easement with the trees.
Who maintains that?
At this point, well, I don't know, because it hasn't been, those lots haven't been developed yet, so.
So you're telling me that?
At this point, those lots were cut twice a year and that's it, you know?
Yeah, so you're telling me someone's gonna, you're gonna have a landscape company cut a 28-foot-wide berm grass, and then another one's gonna come and...
That'll be cut, that'll be cut with the rest, with the rest of that, that building's landscaping. It's an easement, but it's part of their property.
Part of their property. Sorry, I'm still confused, maybe I'm just trying to understand it. The 20-foot berm is still part of your property, whether there's an easement on it or not, it's still part of your property and you're required to maintain it. So I'm just trying to understand, again, if that's like 40 feet from the sidewalk to the back of the curb of the new parking lot, it's still all grass?
Yes.
Right, yes, so it's all grass, so, and still the responsible, responsibility of the owner of that property to maintain that. So why couldn't the berm go beyond, you know, I'm just trying to understand, that's all. It doesn't, I'm still not computing it, I mean, unless there's a legal thing that I, whatever.
I guess the question is, Mr. Morelli, would you be willing to expand that berm in order to get to five feet, in order to achieve what is being asked this evening?
Which is a five-foot berm?
The five-foot-high berm.
If we did that, we wouldn't need an extra, what, 12 feet, six per side, right, is that right? You're going one foot up for every three feet?
Yeah.
If that, yeah, if that's something the planning commission deems is a must and they want that, I'd be willing to do that, but if not, I'd kind of prefer to keep it in the landscape easement.
Right.
At the three-foot high, but if it has to be done, I mean...
You do have residential across the street and...
I'm open to doing that.
That does make a, he makes a very good point there. So we've got that. Where, does anybody, any of the other members have any questions before I elaborate? What can we do with the dumpster?
Man, I really prefer the location it's in. Now, if we have a five-foot-high berm with trees planted on the berm, plus three evergreens around the dumpster, are we even going to see it? I mean, that's a pretty...
Let me ask you this, I mean, the app, the, the end users, he's, he's here this evening.
Yes.
Do you need all those parking spaces? I know that we have a requirement, township, for the amount of parking spaces, but we also in the past have, have banked parking spaces. Do you need all those parking spaces? And then if, if the applicant, or I'm sorry, if the, if the proposed user, and I don't know what the relationship is here, if you own the building, or if he's buying the building, or you're buying the building, and you sell it in the future, the township has the right to, to exercise the use, or to make the new user, new owner, add the parking spaces if we bank parking spaces. We've done that in the past. Would that help you, Mr. Morelli?
As far as moving location of it?
He's storing cars inside the building, why does he need all those parking spaces?
To meet the code, for that side of the building. So you're right, you could bank...
And that's to my point, and that's to my point, is the township in the past, that we have in the past.
We don't need that much parking, but future use.
In, in order to, to come to a conclusion on a site plan.
Yeah, we don't need that many spots, for sure.
Okay. I'm just throwing it out there, Mr. Morelli.
But for resale value.
If you want to make some adjustments, I personally, I don't want the dumpster on Chesterfield Road, I don't want the people across the street to see that dumpster, the residential across the street, I don't want the people across the street to see light shining in their windows, so, you know, the full cutoff light fixtures. There's, there's a number of items in the drawings here that I feel need to be addressed. The turning radius, as Mr. Carr has brought up.
Well, the lights, we remove the three poles, I will do cutoff lighting on the building, to shine down and not out. The berm, we've addressed that, if the commission wants that, we will go five-foot-high with that, and that's going to help screen the dumpster area also. The turning radius, that the engineer did that plan, and it meets, it works, it's tight, but it works, so I want to stick with that. You know, there's a budget to everything, so you can make anything more roomy, but it's just more and more money. And then, as far as move, if we can bank some parking to put the dumpster in a different location, yeah, we can look at that, I don't know where, where you are thinking of putting it, is the question. That is a, the wall is what, six, is that wall six foot? Can't even read that.
How high is?
The dumpster wall.
Six foot.
Six, yeah, six-foot-high dumpster wall with five-foot-high berm and the trees on the berm and the spruces, it's going to be pretty well hidden, but if, I'm open to, if we want to move it somewhere. And I plan on staining the, to be a cement dumpster wall, I plan on staining that same color as a block, to blend in with the building, and it's composite material as far as the gate material is, so it'll be a nice structure, nice-looking structure.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
I hate, I hate to make you come back, but we're looking at inconsistencies within the, the site plans that we've seen. We've talked about a number of changes that the applicant's willing to make, and we also have a dumpster that we're not comfortable with, the location, and I think you need some time to pull together what your best proposal would be, get us consistent drawings so that we can make a decision to approve or not, but I, I would hope we could approve a set of drawings that's consistent, that we understand, and representative of the best you can do with the berm and the dumpster. So if you could update all that stuff, give us one packet that's consistent, representative of what you're, what you're proposing, I think we'd have a really good opportunity to give you a favorable judgment. Can you do that for us?
Yes, are, are you favorable to putting the dumpster at the end of the parking lot on Morelli Drive?
You, I don't think anyone on, on this commission wants to see it from the road, and I, I think we've made that clear, what is the best you can do, understanding budgets, understanding all this, I want to see it. And maybe you come back and say, hey, we're not moving it, this is what it looks like with a five-foot berm and, and the, and the trees and every, this is what it looks like, that'd be really easy for me to decide, but I can't even picture it in my mind. So I would ask you to make all the changes and come back with your best proposal, please.
Mr. Morelli, I mean, personally, you just asked me that, you just asked the question if I'd rather see it in the industrial environment to see a dumpster as compared to seeing a dumpster from a residential point of view? I think that I would probably consider that more so than having it on Chesterfield Road.
Okay.
As Mr. Burkhardt said, I think that there are some inconsistencies here, so I'd like to postpone making a decision this evening, and I'd like to make a motion to postpone and give you an opportunity to make changes, and, you know, and I did throw out something with banking parking spots. So if that can help you in any way, then, you know, that is a possibility or consideration.
Okay, thank you for the advice, and we'll, we'll get it correct and resubmit.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli.
Can I say one last comment? On the site plan, on the future expansion of the parking lot, where does that fall in?
Mr. Morelli? Mr. Burkhardt had another question here.
Ms. Morelli, just one last comment on the, the future expansion of the parking lot towards, on Morelli Drive, what was the plan for the future use of that?
That's just to show a possibility of a future addition of the building and where the parking would go.
Because you have a proposed, possibly a proposed dumpster at the end of that location, so...
That was the thoughts, yes.
The thoughts on that one? Okay.
But there's no timeframe on that addition, you know?
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. I'd like to make a motion to postpone making a decision for Morelli Lot 5 Site Plan 2024-24. Then I'll make a motion to postpone up to six meetings.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Burkhardt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item nine is Presentation, Reports, and Discussion. A, sub, subletter A is Appointment of Officers. We do not have a full board this evening, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the appointment of officers till our next meeting, then I'll make a motion to do so.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Burkhardt. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, subsection B, is Zoning Ordinance Amendments and Discussion, Fuel Station Spacing Workshop Memo Final. Ms. Osborne, do you have anything to elaborate on that?
Not really, we wanted to come back to you with some answers to questions that you had at the last meeting, so our team did a little bit of research, hopefully that answered the questions that you had, namely, where, let's see if I can go in order here, what are best practices for acceleration and deceleration lanes, examples of non-corner, non-corner lot gas stations, and then a little bit more background on the NEVI program and the one-mile distance. So that's really, you know, this memo was just kind of providing some support and some, some additional background information that you had asked us for, and so, yeah, happy to do some more research, happy to discuss the, the proposed amendment, that language is a little bit further down in your packet, page seven, or, you know, just let us know how you want to move forward, I guess that's the gist of it, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Trustee Vosberg? Comments, questions?
I didn't, I have questions, I have things going in my mind, but I'm not sure how to formulate a question. The, the proposed language, can you tell, right now, we have that you need, a service station needs to have, has to be on a corner so that there's ingress and egress on two different streets, and this one is proposing a wide enough area that there could be two safe ingress and egress far enough away from each other, is that the, the idea?
So right now, we're looking at just a text amendment, not a specific site, although there is a specific site that's driving this amendment change. So the... So, the proposed language, you're correct in that, right now, the township requires that fuel stations be located on the corner of two public roads. Those roads each have to be a hundred and twenty feet wide. And, uh, or one that's a hundred and twenty feet and the other one that's eighty-six feet on the master plan. What's been proposed is that the requirement, um, that those requirements wouldn't be applicable if they're the site is within one mile of a interchange, which is most of those, the stretch in of, um, most of the stretch where most gas stations would be in the township.
True, so this does not address having the distance between entrances? Or whether there'd even be more than one entrance?
No, so that was in thinking, you know, taking a step back and thinking about, you know, whether or not a corner is really required for for a gas station to be as safe as a corner lot. The discussion came up, well, we might need deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes. And what would what would the site need to be able to put those in and have those safety measures in if we didn't have a corner lot? And so that's what this information was providing, so it was kind of looking, you know, if we in my mind, I was thinking it was going to take us maybe, the the planning commission was asking the question two steps down the road, basically, saying if we did away with corner lots, what would the lot need to look like to meet our safety requirements? And so that's where the standards related to the acceleration, deceleration came in. And anyone who, I can't remember who asked that question, but if there was some other purpose for it, feel free to chime in.
The petitioner was up earlier, and and he made a couple of comments, and I forgive me for not remembering your name. You made a comment that, if I if I wrote it down correctly, the corner lots in Chesterfield Township are not large enough for all types of alternative energy. We we need to have a change in the ordinance in order to have the the square footage. You mentioned EV charging, gasoline, hydrogen, propane, and all the alternative fuels. My question would be, how large do these lots need to be to support each of those alternative energy fuel sources? And then what are your plans specifically for each of the alternative energies you're planning to put in?
Please approach and comment.
Please.
Jamie Robinson, I'm with Royal Gas and Oil, I I own the company. Truly, there's no standard on size, it's just going off of all the energies between propane, natural gas, diesel, electric, hydrogen. Trying to plan for, I, we're not going to have just one energy source that fuels us going into the future. I know a lot of us were thinking EV, it's not just EV, you're going to have some EV, you're going to have some hydrogen when it comes to larger vehicles. You're going to have natural gases, we are, we're already seeing, you're going to have propane, so it's trying to make sure that you have it in a safe setup as we go forward into it. The normal gas station corner lot, for the most part, you're looking at about an acre size of what in Metro Detroit. Now, as we're getting further on, out into the growing suburbs, you are getting some larger lots that you're able to accommodate, maybe, you know, three and a half, four acres on this. Those ones there, you you might be able to get some of them, but you won't be able to get them all. We're just trying to make it so that we can accommodate as the auto industry progresses on which ones we focus on.
So what's the minimum size in in your mind?
Minimum size, I mean, if you go off based on the state of Michigan on their hydrogen initiative, you're lock, you're talking that they want to be able to have it where you had a hydrogen plant on your location. I'm not looking to be able to put a hydrogen plant on on our location. But you're talking about still the fact that you're going to have, you're going to have to have storage for it, so you're talking about a couple acres just for storage on that.
Yeah, I'm looking for a compelling reason to to change the ordinance, I don't have one yet. What what I'm hearing is we need larger lots, but I I'm not hearing how big and and, I I'm hearing all the different alternative energies that could fuel a motor vehicle, that that's wonderful. Are you going to put them all there? If you do, you you're going to need several acres. If if you're only going to put in a few, or if you don't know, I'm just trying to understand why we would change an ordinance. I I need to have a compelling reason, and respectfully, I didn't get one earlier.
We would like to put them all in, that, I mean, that's my goal, is to make it so that we we can put everything that's currently available into that location. Something that you're probably looking at would be a minimum of ten, twelve acres would be the minimum size for something like that. That's why, you know, trying to find something, you don't have that down in the city, you can't, you know, so as you're moving out, truly, this is where Chesterfield along I ninety-four is where you start getting into those first first lots that can accommodate something that size.
Ten to twelve acres, thank you.
Correct.
Ms. Vosburgh, are you all set?
I ask, add something to that, the Roselle's piece on twenty-three mile road is approximately twenty-five acres in size. We gave you a preliminary site plan showing multiple entrances, so that it's-
Eric, let me stop you there, and and I can understand that, but as as Mr. Burkhardt said, we're we're not changing the oil for, or changing our ordinances for one specific piece of property. This is just a general discussion, at least in my opinion, this is just a general discussion, and Mr. Burkhardt was asking the the applicant or the proposed property for his expertise, so that we can carry on. And we do realize that that is a large enough piece of property. So, we're just, at this point, we're just gathering information so that it's a generalized, in my opinion, it's a generalized ordinance change so that it accommodates everybody, not just this specific piece of property.
But then along those lines, if you need a minimum of three to four acres, and you're within one mile of I ninety-four, when you look at what's already built along twenty-three, there's not too many-
And I understand him, Mr. Gannon, but you've got twenty-one mile road, you've got twenty-one mile road which is in Chesterfield Township, you've got part of Hall Road, which is close to Chesterfield, if not some Chesterfield, and you've got the New Haven exit, who has only one exit, on and off.
That's the problem.
But that's also Chesterfield Township, so it's not just twenty-three mile road, it's not just this piece of property. It has to be, this ordinance change has to encompass all of Chesterfield Township, not just that piece of property.
But on those other roads, there's not too many large pieces.
Okay.
On twenty-one and Hall Road.
Thank you. Mr. Klenowski?
Yeah, the it's very difficult for me to try to figure out, you know, what's going to be the future, future product? You know, you're looking at a lot of options, but yet how can we formulate anything when we we don't know what the future is going to hold? And indeed, even in the, even the state standards with regard to electrification, they stated that monthly meetings are held between M dot Eagle, Leo, and MPSD to set priorities, review progress, evaluate results, and identify the next step to maximize electrification. You know, it's just, it it just I don't, you know, how do you change something you don't know? Even the state doesn't know, they're trying to evaluate the situation, so that's that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I mean, this one, in particular, I I mean, you guys kind of addressed what I was, was, what I was going to say in regards to the fact that that we're not looking at just this property, I mean, and that's where I think some people are getting confused, I mean, we appreciate you coming forward with this to your own benefit. But I mean, when we're looking at the ordinance changes, I mean, we do have to look at the macro and the impact of that, and that's what I was going to actually say today was, I mean, I still think gas stations should be on two major streets when possible, and so if, even if I was entertaining this, I mean, I I wanted to make sure the language still protects for that, and that these are outliers that we might, you know, allow on a case by case basis, I don't know how that ordinance language looks. I mean, even if it's something that has to go in front of zoning, you know, say, if we do agree that, you know, if you're within one mile of of I ninety-four, you still need to get a variance. If you meet these standards within the ordinance, you know, you would go and and get that approval through zoning, just because, just to get that, just so that not every person's coming here with a gas station and wanting to put it wherever they want, you know, that has that properly zoned property, so you know, I still want to protect for that, and that's why, again, I'm, I mean, I know what they're trying to do, I mean, and I don't, I'm familiar with that property on on Mound Road, that was one of the samples in here, you know, I've driven by that many times, I I actually have been in there before. You know, I mean, I think it can work, uh, you know, with multiple entrances and exits, I do believe it can work. Again, I I'm just struggling with how to modify ordinance but still protect us from not losing the intent of the original ordinance, because I do believe the intent of the original ordinance is still correct. So that's, that's kind of my struggle, but, I mean, I do think that property probably could be a good fit for this, I'm just trying to figure out how to prevent it from getting out of control with other potential properties within Chesterfield. So, that's what I'm still struggling with.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Bruno?
Yeah, I have some thoughts here, but, um, I'm wondering if maybe we're going about this the wrong way potentially, and what I mean by that is, I love, I I'll be honest, I personally love the concept of bringing the multi-different energy types to a single location in Chesterfield, I I actually would be very much behind that. But perhaps instead of maybe looking at the ordinance for these gasoline self-service stations, maybe we should be looking at how we define what a gasoline self-service station is, or if you have a multi-use property that does more than just gasoline. Maybe that's another way to approach it, but I, you know, from an economic impact, I think it would actually be pretty good as far as, you know, jobs, tax income, and so on, from that perspective. But I am concerned about into Mr. Carr's point, I do believe, I think, you know, your strict gasoline should be at the corner, in and out on both sides, it's a safety thing. I've been in too many fender benders where I've been through no fault of my own. People trying to deal with those, and that can be a problem. So, I mean, I would love to find a way to address future expansion, but like I said, necessarily change the ordinance for one specific property, so that's where I'm, you know, I'm at at the moment, and I'd like to see if we might be able to find another way to a approach this from a different angle, possibly. Because I think the concept is definitely worthwhile and looking into, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I agree, there's not a lot that I'm hearing that really supports changing the ordinance, but it's a, it's a good concept that we would have to try another way to figure out to make it work.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Ms. Osborne, is there any way to find out possible sites, ten acres or larger, within the NEVI distance of a of a mile from I ninety-four? As the ordinance is written, and then should we make a modification to the ordinance to address the the issue at hand? I I'd like to, if there's, if there's nothing available this way, that that's a pretty, that's a pretty strong reason to maybe modify an ordinance. If there's a dozen available right now, I would think the opposite would hold true. Could you, could you look into that for us?
Sure, yeah, our GIS team can provide a map and count of the number and size and all that.
Right, unless you guys have already done that.
I have not.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Well, if you need ten acres for all the items, how do you pick and choose if it's a smaller, you know, size acreage? You know, what if we, if we're only allowed five acres or three acres, what the ordinance change? How do you pick and choose what is available, or what would be right for the time? With all the, uh, you know, you know, gas, electric, hydrogen, all these items, you know, if it's, if it has to be ten acres, what if it's only five acres? Because the ordinance we changed, how do you pick and choose which is just going to be there?
For five acre, I wouldn't be looking at that piece of part, I wouldn't be looking at a twenty-five acre parcel. You know, if I knew I needed less.
But I would- But for the or, but for the ordinance. That was where Mr. Klenowski is going, and and that's, I was going to actually comment on that, I, to me, I don't think we should be looking at fuel surface. That's, that's a business decision that I don't, to me, from a board perspective, it's like any other thing, right, like, like Mr. Sebert's taught us, many, you know, we don't really get into the business side of it, I mean, we can't really decline somebody if they meet the requirements of that zoning and that ordinance, I mean, that's a business decision, right? Same thing if you put two gas stations next to each other, two fast food joints. I mean, to me, that's up to the developer that's building that property, and that's, I was just going to, you know, just, I mean, I I I know where Mr. Klenowski's going, and, but, you know, from my perspective, it's like, to me, we look at what type of prop, I think that was a great idea from, you know, just, I think we look at the properties that are within that one mile corridor to see what Pandora's box were potentially opening. And then, you know, we, we we look at it that way, and, you know, we see just again, what what are we really looking at? I mean, again, if there's only one or two properties that even fit a five to ten acre parcel, I mean, I think that that changes how we look, I mean, but if it's like twenty, you're right, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's, but I don't think we should get into the type of fuel surface because, or fuel sources, because that could change ten times over in the next ten years, so-
But Brian, we have to look at the alternative energy, otherwise, the NEVI doesn't even qualify. So what we're, what we're doing is we're trying to change an ordinance to allow Chesterfield Township people to take advantage of money tied to alternative fuels. So if we don't consider the alternative fuels, what, we're disconnecting the two. I hear what you're saying, and ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I'll agree with you. But I think this is, this is an albatross, because we have to consider the alternative fuel sources in order for it to qualify for NEVI funding from the state. And if we do that, we're kind of making a business, a business decision as well, which we shouldn't do. So, this is a weird one, at least for me.
I'm not familiar with, I mean, I haven't read NEVI, but I I can't believe that, I'm I'm assuming there must be a minimum number of alternative fuel sources that would that would meet that requirement, I can't imagine it's every single, but I don't know, I haven't read it, but, and I know you're mean, but all I was saying was, say there's ten fuel, alternative fuel sources right now that qualify within NEVI, all I'm saying is, say, in order to, uh, meet the requirements of NEVI subsidizing or whatever, whatever you go, maybe you have to have at least a minimum of four alternative fuel sources within your property to qualify for that, I don't know what that is. All I'm saying is, say it is that, we shouldn't dictate what fuel, what four fuel sources they have, that's all I was trying to say was, if they choose propane, hydrogen, gasoline, and electric, so be it, that's all I was trying to say.
Okay, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I don't know NEVI well enough to, but I can't believe it's, where you have to have every single alternative fuel, exact, I mean, I gotta believe it's a minimum nu, you know, minimum, you can't just sell gasoline, electric, it probably doesn't comply, but if you had maybe four different alternative sources, maybe that's when it kicks in, I I don't know, but that's all I was trying to say is, whatever it does require, we don't, uh, we just don't stipulate that, it's, it's up to the developer to say, these are alternative energy sources, and this is, you know, and it fits within this six acre lot that I want to do it in, and that's all my point was, but, yeah, yeah.
You're right, and I, and, I'm sorry, Eric.
No, that's it, yep, that's exactly what I wanted to say. It wasn't, I wasn't trying to say, okay, you know, go for, you know, fuel sources, it's, okay, what do you need per, you know, you know, if it's one acre, two acres, three acres, four acres, if you rezone it, do you, you know, what would you pick and choose in relationship to all the fuel sources? If you're allowed, you know?
Like, like, for instance, I know I've done energy grids, right, with solar, right, and so I've done charging stations with with solar in my time, because I worked at DT Energy, so I've done a lot of alternative fuel sources, I've done NextEnergy where we've done, you know, I I've done hydrogen, I've done the propane, I've done, I I'm familiar with it, and so like, for instance, if I was doing that, I might want to put a little mini solar farm that that's doing all my, my charging, right? I mean, even where I currently work, we have a product where it's, there's a, it's a mobile unit that we can ship on a truck, put in the middle of a parking lot, it's got solar panels, and it it can charge up to four, you know, electric vehicles at one time with no hardwires, right? So, I am just saying, there's a million, but if you wanted to do that, where you wanted to put a little microgrid out there with solar panels, they might need more property, right? And so, I don't know, I was just, but I know what you're saying, and that's kind of where I think we're all trying to figure out what's what that is and what that looks like.
Mr. Carr, I don't know if you've, you've seen them, but they are now having it where canopies that we all pull under every, every day to fuel our vehicles. They're made out of solar panels now, so that they, you are creating a farm versus where you see DT using open fields and and basing these things, and here, we're trying to get it now where it's based on the piece of property that you have generates some of the energy that you're trying to use. And here, we're trying to get it now where it's based on the piece of property that you have generates some of the energy that you're trying to use.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, if you remember back in December, we kind of had a similar conversation of, you know, what, what comes first, and, you know, just gas stations versus alternative fuels. And what we did at the recommendation of, of Stephanie and Jill was we broke it down into two separate issues of the gas station spacing and locations, and then the alternative fuels. So, at the last meeting in, or the meeting in January, there was two separate memos, one for each of them. And then, there was a discussion whether to continue or not. So, this one is just on the spacing of the fuel stations, because I do think it is two separate issues. Is everyone comfortable with our gas station ordinance as it's currently written, or do we need to make a change? And then, if we, once we make a decision on that, is there a different answer to alternative fueling stations? Do those need different standards, are they the same standards as gas stations? So, it's kind of two separate issues that need to be looked at.
It is, and, you know, the last thing that I was gonna make is, is, I want, personally, I want to be in front of all of this. I don't want to just kick the can down the road and, and have it, have it creep up on us in the future and, and not be prepared. So, is our next step then is, and, and I do agree that we need to, to make the change. Is our next step is to move on to a public hearing and continue on, and, and, and continue the process? I think, personally, I think that we should, we need to continue on. You know, back to one of the, one of the issues is changing the current ordinances on quarter, on, on corners. It is to have it two entrances off of two separate streets, which could all be discussed in future. But, and I do appreciate these gentlemen coming in front of us this evening, and I think that if we, if we did move on to the next step, and we had public hearings, and we could, we could continue on with these discussions, I think we can gather a lot more information, just as we did with cannabis. It was very helpful to have those experts in here helping us to, to make a decision and to create ordinance.
I agree on the public hearing, that's a good idea.
So, personally, I think we need to move on to the next step.
In order to do a public hearing, the, public hearing's got to be on the draft of the ordinance. So, you know, the commission would have to come up with something that they want to hold the public hearing on.
Right.
So.
So, and that's what I'm saying, is maybe we need, okay, so then we need to move on with the draft, and Giffords Webster can help us with that, I'm assuming.
I think the question would be, do you want to move forward with what the applicant proposed? You know, it's a very small cha, it's a small text change, could have big implications, but it's, it's pretty clean and straightforward, it's this change. You know, it's something you've already seen. Or Jill and Eva and I can work to bring you something different, but that would require, you know, probably another meeting. You would probably want to see it, you know, before it goes to public hearing, and that could get in the weeds.
I, I think if you, you, if you just come back with the, the number of sites that are potential, that fall within that one-mile corridor, I think that if the, if those numbers are small, I think that their language probably would be sufficient, to be honest with you. But I think we just want to know what, again, what we're getting into. Yeah, just potential impact. I think if you could do that for the next meeting, because, I mean, their language is pretty straightforward.
It is. And, you know, and I want to remind somebody, all of us that, you know, we talked about 21-mile road, 23-mile road. Don't forget about 26-mile road, on the, on the south side of 26-mile road, there's still a lot of vacant land, all the way to Grashit, or I'm sorry, all the way to the New Haven Road, there's, there's a lot of vacant land there. So, there is, potentially, there's a lot of space that's available there.
Yeah, I just want, oh, first of all, we appreciate your time in the discussion, so thank you very much. One of the things that, that I think Mr. Gendron Alec, his clients, myself, is that in the discussion, a couple different issues were raised, and we want to be able to provide you with as much information. I think I know that one of the issues is how many lots are there, but what we want to be able to do is, can, is there a way that you can, like, say, okay, here are the issues, and here's more information we want to hear from Royal Gas and Oil? I mean, one of the questions was, okay, how big a lot size, or how big do we need? I mean, is that going to be an issue that would be discussed as part, as part of, maybe not the amendment process, but of the, of what it would look like? So, we want to be able to, instead of, Mr. Lebel said, kicking the can down the road, at least with respect to this text amendment, we want to get you, and that's where I think we're, we're not sure. And when we've been coming to these meetings, we're not clear on what information you need, so you can get to a point where you can make a decision, positive or negative. So, is there, in addition to, I'm sorry, I can't see the, it's, it's the side.
Osborne.
Ms. Osborne, getting the information about the lots, what else can we provide you to help you flesh out the issues that affect Chesterfield Township? And, and you don't have to answer today, but if, if Mr. Palin can give us that, or we can get it from Ms. Osborne, so we can get you that information.
And we do appreciate your offering that, but at this point, and that is forthcoming.
We, we kind of come to this, like, not knowing what's, what the discussion is going to be, and what we have to address, to get you comfortable.
And that is forthcoming. I think that Mr. Carr is correct, we need to just move on to the next step, and just see what, what's available, and if, if we truly do need to make a change. I think that there is properties available, and, you know, and I personally believe that we should move on to the next step, creating an ordinance, and then, and then gathering more information from, from the public, see what the people of Chesterfield Township want to do, as well as the experts gathering their information, so that we can make a better decision. Ms. Vosberg?
Yeah, thank you. I think it originated, as was already stated, originated because one business owner wanted to perhaps make this fit. And that NEVI is that relate, that's related to within a certain distance of I-94 corridor. But I'm also wondering, thinking, if this is so successful, because we live in a higher density area than, you know, some of the places, you know, in the middle of the state or whatever, that maybe we want to look at this, it could become something that even if they don't qualify for some other credits, or, or grants, or whatever, that there might, might be something that would be for the future, too. So, I think that should be in our mind as well, when we, when we craft, if we're going to craft a new ordinance, don't just look at, does it qualify for NEVI? But if, if it were to go somewhere else, do we have additional sites, than just along the I-94 corridor?
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lebel, I have a question. You, you talk about moving forward with drafting an ordinance. Is that simultaneous with Ms. Osborne getting the information about the various sites in the, in the township?
I think that what I've heard this evening is, is that they would like to see if it, if it warrants moving forward beyond taking the next step, as I, as I've alluded to. We'll give Ms. Osborne and her team an opportunity to see truly how many pieces of property are available along, along I-94.
Within that one-mile.
Within that one-mile stretch, either way, to see, you know, if there's, if there's only one or two lots, then maybe it's not worth making all, going through all these changes. But I believe that there is, and let's give Ms. Osborne an opportunity to continue on.
And I'll work on drafting, because I had suggested some language, and I'll work on drafting and submitting to Jonathan for dissemination amongst you.
If you choose to.
Some alternative language. And then, as to Mr. Lebel's comment, as to the 26-mile, I'm pretty sure it was Love's, they were interested several years ago in putting a truck stop there, just east of the interchange, because they liked it, because you could get on and go off for both directions. But the problem they had was, they had township water, but they didn't have township sanitary sewer, and they didn't think they had enough property to have the appropriate septic system. So, they abandoned that project, and they built a project up at Wadham's Road and I-94, because at Wadham's, you can get on and get off in both directions. And that's where, like, New Haven Road, you can get off, but you can't get back on going towards Port Huron and going on to Canada. And that's what a lot of the long-distance truckers are heading for.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you.
Is there anything else anybody would like to add before we move on to the next agenda item?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 10, is Planning Commissioner's comments, a three-minute time limit, please. Start on this end. Eric, welcome, and if you, at this point, what we do is we, we vent. We give everybody an opportunity to say what they want to say, and, you know, if there's any, anything that you, that you'd like to bring up. And, and maybe at that time, maybe you can also, you know, tell us about your qualifications and where you come from. And, and why you want to be on our planning commission.
Well, I, I. Sorry about that, yeah, yeah, all these new things. I have a architectural firm in Clinton Township for the last 30 years, so I'm kind of familiar with qualifications of the planning commission, and site plans, and, and buildings, so, and, and doing a lot of presentations in different communities in planning, zoning. So, I think this is a perfect fit, so. Been in, I was born and raised in New Baltimore from the 70s, and got married, and kind of had my kids in Chesterfield Township, and here I am, so.
Thank you so much. Mr. Burkert?
I, I just wanted to, this whole fueling station thing, I, first off, I think we're really fortunate to have somebody here wanting to invest in Chesterfield Township in alternative fuels, and I, I think that's really good for us. How we change an ordinance, it's hard for me to change any ordinance that's been around for a long time without a compelling reason. I love the idea of alternative energy. I wish I knew which one would, you know, really crank, and be the one the country goes to. We don't know. This gentleman said he's willing to do any or all, which is wonderful. Ms. Vosberg, you said, maybe we should open it up to all the fuel stations, not just the ones a mile away from I-94. My mind was completely different, open it up just for those within I-94. So, Mr. Lebel, continued discussion is important, and I think we'll come up with the right decision, as long as we keep having honest dialogue. And once we pull the people in, we're going to get a lot of feedback, so. It's kind of an exciting time in that regard. Other than that, I'm, I'm done, thanks.
I would just say with that discussion, that we have some, some kind of framework or roadmap on how we want to move forward, and at what intervals, because it seems like we're continually bringing up these topic of discussions, and we're still, I, you know, I agree, the applicant wants to move forward, but, you know, we've got to have some kind of criteria when we look at something, right? I mean, if anybody brought something to us and says, oh, could you look at this? And we spend months reviewing it, and Giffords Webster, and Stephanie goes through the process and does thing, Jonathan does all his stuff. I, I personally feel we really need some kind of criteria of how we relook at ordinances, not based on one person and one piece of property. So, I, I agree, we have to be forward-looking with the alternative fuel. I mean, that is the future. But when we're looking at just one situation to change an ordinance that can impact many, I just don't feel comfortable. I don't feel comfortable. And what's on the table right now, I, if it was up to me today, I would say, no, there's not enough stuff, there's not enough there to support changing an ordinance. You talk about that location, yeah, it's a good location, proximity to I-94, with Michigan in the revenue, 23-mile sucks. That is a bad location just being on 23. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno?
I'm actually good for the evening, thank you. Eric, welcome.
Mr. Carr?
I'm good.
Mr. Klenowski?
Welcome, Eric, and, yeah, I think we'll figure it out somehow.
Trustee Vosberg?
Yes, I would, I would concur with everything that's been said. However, I'm not afraid to change an ordinance, because an ordinance can be amended, it can be changed again and again and again, depending on, you know, what the facts and circumstances are. And over the years, Chesterfield has changed ordinances, they've written new ones, they've changed old ones. They've gotten rid of old ordinances that no longer apply, so I'm not afraid of that. I'm, look forward to continuing the discussion, and even tonight, I learned some more things. I started out saying I wouldn't even know what question to ask. I had, I know a couple more now to ask, and it's just because we continue, keeping it out in the open, we continue asking questions. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know, and we're learning some of that, too, what we don't know, so we know what questions to ask, and how, how to craft any kind of ordinance, so, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome Eric. Good to have you on our board. Secondly, I'd like to give a little, a little kudos, a little speech about Mr. Miller, our former, our former chairperson. I'm sorry that he's not here. I think that Mr. Miller did a wonderful job, and he will, he will continue serving Chesterfield Township. I've had multiple conversations with him about that, and, but I welcome the new chairperson, whoever that wants to be. And with that, I'm looking for volunteers for pre-planning. Mr. Carl Leonard is not here this evening, he, he wants to be part of the pre-planning next time, but we're going to need some volunteers. Eric would like to be there, anybody else? So, that's two, that should be, that should be sufficient. With that, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at nine, I'm sorry, 8:45?
Support.
8:45.
8:45?
Yeah.
I can't see the far.
8:45.
With that, all in favor?